Get in exactly on time, start tonight at 7:00 PM. This is the second regular city commission meeting for the city of Orman Beach. We are continuing to be socially distanced in chambers and it is 7:00 PM. I would like to, 7:00 PM on October 20th, 2020, I'd like to introduce the folks who are up in front of you. To my right, your left, recording secretary Cassidy Ritz. Next is, at the opposite end of where he usually sits, our city attorney Randy Hayes. And busy at work next to him is Commissioner Dwight Selby from Zone 1. Our deputy mayor in Zone 2 Commissioner Troy Kent. To my left and your right, Commissioner Susan Persis from Zone 3. Commissioner Rob Littleton from Zone 4. And down in front, we have Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. City Manager Joyce Shanahan. I'm going in some kind of order, so forgive me. And last but not least, for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would, please rise, silence your cellphones, and we'll have the invocation given by Father Roy Allison from St. James Episcopal Church, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down your Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice upon all those who hold office in the city of Orman Beach. We pray especially this evening for our Mayor Bill, for our commissioners, we pray for our city attorney, for our city managers, for our first responders, and all those who work in the public works to help make this city a beautiful place to live. We ask you to help them with steadfast purpose to be faithful in their offices, to promote the well-being of all people. We ask you to allow them to see that all those whose lives they serve, their livelihoods, the land they are entrusted with, that to you they are precious in your sight. May all that is said and decided here this evening enable this community to thrive and to grow, and to bring honor and glory to your name. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask Lauren Huta and her family to come forward for a proclamation presentation. Congratulations. Who do you have, who do you have with you, Lauren?
Beautiful. Beautiful.
And is it mom and dad and boyfriend with you?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna, this feels like a family affair. I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then we're gonna have the commission get behind you for a socially-distanced picture, and we'll go from there, and then we'll get some pictures, and we'll make sure we get plenty for you. Whereas, classroom teachers, and I should almost have Commissioner Persis read this because she was principal there, but I'll read it. Whereas classrooms teachers are the cornerstone of our educational system, classroom teachers have the greatest impact on the education of a child, and so many opportunities to make lasting influences in the lives of so many. And whereas Florida schools are filled with caring and qualified professionals who are helping students learn more and lead better lives, the Teacher of the Year program is an effort to honor a teacher who is a representative of all excellent teachers. And whereas Lauren Huta, a lifetime Orman Beach resident and Seabreeze High School alumna, was named Volusia County Council for Elementary Exceptional Student Education's Teacher of the Year. Lauren has been at Orman Beach Elementary for four years, but has been teaching in Volusia County for seven years. Her students range in age from kindergarten level through the 5th grade, and she currently works with eight groups a day on reading and math. Lauren describes herself as a ping-pong ball due to the fast pace involved during those hours with her students. And whereas Lauren always knew that she wanted to be a teacher, growing up with twin cousins who have autism led her heart to ESE and taught her many things, including patience and acceptance. Individuals with learning disabilities are viewed by Lauren as simply different, and she prefers to call those differences "exceptionalities." Lauren believes that everyone is capable of learning, however, everyone has their own pace, and learning is never the same across the board. And whereas Lauren is known for her tie-dye skills at Orman Beach Elementary, she loves the colors and enjoys the craft which started during her time at the University of Central Florida, it has become a rite of passage for all of her 5th grade students to receive a tie-dyed shirt at the end of the year. Lauren has run into former students who continuously love to wear her shirts even after leaving her classroom. And whereas Lauren loves what she does, she is inspired to reach all learners and build connections with all of the students and colleagues she comes into contact with. Her favorite thing is to see her students succeed in the classroom. Lauren enjoys seeing their confidence increase, and it makes her heart happy when her students are able to help others in areas where they previously had difficulty. And whereas Lauren is the daughter of Ned Huta, Information Technology Manager for the city of Orman Beach, both Ned and his wife Pam, who also works for Volusia County Schools at Osceola Elementary School, are extremely proud of Lauren's accomplishments and admire her work with exceptional individuals. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Orman Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2020, as a day to recognize Lauren Huta in the city of Orman Beach, and encourage residents to join me in recognizing Laura for her outstanding accomplishments and dedication to her students and community. Congratulations, Lauren. Let's get everybody in, and then we'll do it right now.
(inaudible) Yes. Sure. (inaudible) (inaudible) No, I just want everyone to know that I had the privilege of hiring Lauren, her first job at Pine Trail Elementary School, and we all knew then, Mr. Harris and I knew then you were gonna be a fabulous teacher, and we noticed right away how you did love, you know, ESE students, and you just have that knack, and so we're just so proud of you. We're not surprised, and I told Mr. Harris about this, and he wanted to pass along his congratulations to you as well, and we want you just to keep up the good work because you are making a difference. Thank you so much, and here's a key to the city of Orman Beach.
(applause)
I'm so glad I did.
All right. Next, if Chief Godfrey and Chief Severs would come up and accept proclamations for First Responders Appreciation Day, present those to you. And we're gonna do the same thing. I'll read it while you guys face the audience, and then we'll get behind you for a picture. We're gonna get our exercise tonight. Whereas, diverse individuals from police, fire, and other organizations in the public safety sector come together as first responders to protect and aid the public in the event of an emergency. And whereas first responders accept the challenges and responsibilities that go along with their chosen field, risking their own safety and personal property in the execution of their duties to protect the public every day. First responders are the first line of defense for the public against all threats, both domestic and foreign. And whereas courage, selflessness, and the duty to serve are commonly-held values among first responders, that's courage, forgive me, seven days a week to deal with emergencies, but also volunteering in our schools and community organizations. We celebrate the service and sacrifice of our first responders who make our community the best in which to live, work, and raise a family. And whereas acts of kindness and appreciation from citizens for first responders provide them with the needed encouragement and support to confront the dangerous and uncertain situations they face every day, residents can show their appreciation and support for our local first responders by placing First Responder Appreciation Yard signs on their property. These yard signs can be obtained from the Orman Beach Performing Arts Center during one of two drive-through pickup events on Monday, October 26, 2020, from 8:30 AM to 10:30 AM, or 3:30 PM to 5:30 PM. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Orman Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 28, 2020, as a day to recognize First Responders Appreciation Day in the city of Orman Beach, and I invite all citizens to join with me this day in honoring and thanking the first responders who work diligently to keep us from harm, and make sure and get your sign on October 26. The chiefs are accepting these on behalf of their departments, so thank you both very much, and we're gonna get a quick picture with you. Great. Thank you. Public Works Director Sean Finley would come forward. And this is a proclamation recognizing our Public Works Department for some hard work they did recently. Sean's accepting this on behalf of the department. Whereas, every municipality has a Public Works Department which covers a variety of areas that are vital to the community. The Orman Beach Public Works Department provides the leadership and guidance to oversee the operations of engineering, fleet management, solid waste, recycling, yard waste, streets, stormwater maintenance, and utilities, specifically water. Most times, citizens aren't aware of all the work involved behind the scenes until a situation arises that disrupts the regular flow of the processes. And whereas, the sewer main collapsed in the intersection of Granada Boulevard and Clyde Morris Boulevard on July 29, 2020, which caused sewers in the area to start backing up and the road to collapse. Public Works staff took immediate action to meet with a local contractor, the Florida Department of Transportation, and Volusia County the next day to discuss the full project scope, both immediate and long-term. Public Works crews started working around the clock immediately, operating three tank trucks for a week to divert over 1 million gallons of wastewater flow and allow the road to be put back into service temporarily. During this time, Tropical Storm Isaiah swirled by the coast of Orman Beach, but the dedicated workers continued their quest to provide the best service to our citizens. And whereas, utilities staff assisted in establishing a temporary bypass, almost half a mile long, diverting over 8 million gallons of wastewater for the next three weeks while construction of the repairs occurred. In order to maintain the regular flow of traffic in all lanes on Granada Boulevard during the day, work was performed in the overnight hours. New pipe and paving of the road were completed by August 25, 2020, less than a month later. The teamwork, efforts, and dedication of our utilities and Public Works crews and staff are to be commended. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Orman Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 21, 2020, as a day to recognize the Public Works and Utilities Department for their outstanding work, and invite all citizens to join me this day in offering these heroic workers our gratitude for keeping the effects on the public to a minimum and for their outstanding service in a critical situation. Congratulations, Sean. Great. Thank you. For audience remarks tonight, we have one card, and that's Jim Schultz.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. I had a bunch of topics, but let me hit the main one. On the fluoridation issue, November 5, the US Ninth Federal Court, San Francisco, is going to hear again to the judge the EPA's new position that they've taken on fluoridation. They were ordered to come up with some sort of a safety analysis because they had prior stated that there had never been any safety data, and that the EPA didn't have the resources to actually determine a safe level that wouldn't give neurotoxic harm to fetuses and babies. But strangely, they had given one study as proof of safety. Strangely, that study was Phyllis Mullenex had done it on rats and developed a sophisticated computer system at Forsyth Institute, which is an extension of Harvard, and a very prestigious place. And what it showed is, depending which phase the baby or fetuses or rats were exposed to fluoridation, they had all different types of neurological, from lethargic to hyperactivity. And when she went to publish it, they told her not to publish it, or they'd fire her. She published it, they fired her. She never got another job, and they proceeded to break up and destroy all of her computer equipment that allowed the analysis of neurotoxic damage in rats. Sort of how the system works sometimes, if you do something unpopular. But, oh, just to mention, the gypsum stacks over on the other side of the state for the fluoride industry or the phosphate industry, they're being allowed to use the radioactive gypsum in roadbeds, and the EPA, out of the blue, gave that allowance that had never been used in the past because it was considered too radioactive. They've made the decision that, while we're gonna bury it under the road, what could affect other than groundwater? Okay. And again, my issue with Facebook, Zuckerberg, and Google, we're losing our First Amendment rights, and with them able to ban any free speech or scientific debate or discussion, do we really have free speech? Because that's how we get almost all of our data. They control it, they ban you.
Thank you, Jim. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. These are the minutes from the city commission meeting of October 6, 2020. They've been sent to the commission for review, as well as being posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, just need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, and we'll show those. Approved unanimously. The consent agenda, the actions stated for each item on the consent agenda will pass unless a commissioner removes any item for discussion purposes. Does any member wish to pull any agenda items? Commissioner Selby?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item I.
7I. Anyone else? Just need a motion to approve absent 7I.
I move approval of the consent agenda minus I.
Second.
Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and now we are on 7I.
Resolution number 2020-155, a resolution authorizing the execution of a cooperative economic development agreement between the city of Orman Beach and Team Volusia Economic Development Corporation, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-155, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. Just need a motion and a second for discussion purposes.
Move approval.
Second.
And Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I support this, this action. I pulled it from the consent agenda because I wanted to speak to it, and there are a couple of representatives here from Team Volusia who maybe can address some, some comments that I'm gonna make. Recently, in social media, I've been personally attacked because of my involvement as a volunteer with Team Volusia. The accusation has been made that I have a conflict of interest as co-chair of the real estate task force, and I thought it would be appropriate to get on the record whether or not that is indeed a conflict of interest, and maybe, maybe just some explanation from either Dwight Durant, who's the immediate past president of Team Volusia, or Chris Wimsat, who's also here, is one of the staff members. And I also want to say that for many years, seven or eight, I don't know how many years, my company has been a supporter of Team Volusia, we've been a member of Team Volusia, and quite honestly, we pay, the dues that we pay to Team Volusia are probably double what we pay to any other organization, like the Chamber, the Daytona Chamber, or the Orman Chamber, or any of the other civic organizations. So, so we really believe in the mission of the organization, and honestly, it's interesting that people would actually say that I'm making money serving in those roles when it's, it's definitely gotta cost me money, honestly, folks, because of the time that it takes. But it's so important to the overall success of our community, so with that, I, you know, I would be...
Did you want Dwight to speak to that?
I would very much like it, yeah, if he's willing to do so.
He did sign up, so...
Great.
Hello, everybody. Dwight Durant, 286 Booth Road, here in Orman Beach. Here as a representative of Team Volusia, but first, this is the first time in six months I've been here. Well done. It's not the same online, I will tell you. I miss being here, but anyway, first off, I'd like to thank the city of Orman Beach for being involved in Team Volusia. Having been here for 35 years, I think this is the first organization I've seen that has actually has brought the county east, west, north, and south together for the common good. It's, it truly is all-in-one. And then personally thank Joyce and Brian for their, you know, I'd just like to say effort, but they're, they're well-listened to, they're engaged, and they provide a lot of direction here for, for the county, and I don't know what we'd do without them. So, you know, thank you for that, and I do appreciate the continued support of Team Volusia. It is, they do have public board meetings, so anybody here is welcome to attend to see what goes on there. But really, the primary reason we're speaking, as Dwight mentioned, is this is a public-private organization, and it's made up of volunteers. Nobody's getting paid. We're paying much. I'm a charter member, eight or nine years, at $10,000 a year just to be there. But like you said, it is, it is extremely worth it. I'm not receiving anything personally either, but we have task force, we have some of the smartest people in the, in the county that converge on these board meetings, trying to bring business and good things to Volusia County, including the city of Orman Beach. And we try to take advantage of the talent in the room, and Dwight is one of those. And so he was nominated to do that because he does real estate, and so you're not gonna ask an engineer to serve on that task force. So those task forces are invaluable because staff cannot do all of this work. We, we want them out recruiting, and we'll handle the work here in town. And, and those task force and committees, well, the task force answer to the committees, and the committees answer to the board, and the board to the executive committee, and then the officers, it's no different than most governments. They're a recommendation, they do all the groundwork, they provide the recommendations, and the decisions are made, you know, by the board, and the task force members are invaluable to this organization. And we checked with our legal assistant, John Ferguson of Cobb Call, and there's no conflict there, so...
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Dwight.
Good deal. Now would be the appropriate time, if any commissioner wanted to comment on any of the other consent agenda items. Deputy Mayor Kent?
Just item K, the application to Firehouse Subs. My fingers are crossed, and I think it's, it's a great thing. I'm glad Orman Beach is participating and trying to get some of that, some of that money from Firehouse Subs for needed supplies for our first responders. So just, just item K.
Commissioner Selby?
Should we vote on item I?
Let's do that. I'm ready to just keep on rolling. Thank you. Thank you for slowing me down. It's okay. All right. So we've had a motion and a second, we've had plenty of discussion and explanation, and Colby, unless anyone has anything else on that, I'll ask for you to call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now's a second bite at the apple for anyone that wants to comment on any other item on the consent agenda. Commissioner Selby?
Sure, thank you. I just, I mean, the first thing I wanted to comment on, well, thank you, thank you for the Team Volusia guys being here very much, I appreciate that, appreciate the support, was the, the employee insurance costs. You know, we, we started the year anticipating potentially a 15% increase in the health insurance policy for city employees, and ended up being only 6%. So that's a huge financial savings to the city. And then I note that all of the other, that there were no increases in any of the other programs that we provide, insurance programs that we provide for city employees. Also wanted to mention the, well, Commissioner Kent beat me to the Firehouse Subs application for the grant, that's great, for protective equipment outside of our ballistic vests for firefighters and ballistic helmets for police. Also, I wanted to mention item M. I'm pleased that, that we are, that we've selected a company to do the update on the leisure services, Parks and Recs and Leisure Services master plan. That plan currently is 15 years old, and we pride ourselves on having top-of-the-line facilities, and I think this is gonna be very valuable in figuring out where we go for the next 10 years. And then finally, I just want to comment on item P, which is the invitation to bid on Florence Street. I had to remind myself where Florence Street is, even though it's, I don't know, about a pitching wedge from my office, it's the one-block-long street behind Julian's. And in the approval process for the gift store, the development order that was approved to go on that site, there was a lot of negotiation with the owner, developer of that property, and it included the ability to create some on-street parking in that area, and so we're going out to bid for the engineer to design, or I guess to actually construct it, right? Yeah, to construct it, it's already designed. And I think that'll be a nice improvement in that, in that part of downtown. So, back? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
They already said everything.
Everybody covered it. Yeah, when you talk about Firehouse, I get hungry.
I know, me too.
They got some great subs, but it's wonderful what they do for our fire departments and fire departments all across the country, so we're optimistic about that. The master plan update for leisure services is gonna be fantastic. I mean, in 15 years, you think about the things that have changed. Pickleball's something that pops into my mind is kind of the new, the new thing that seems to have sticking power, but what else is out there that needs to be looked at for a city to provide great services, and so I'm glad we're taking the time to do that. And the insurance, our staff works so hard with our brokers, and they can't come to us every year, like you pointed out, with no increases, when you're looking at it by the numbers, but they do an exceptional job for us, and so we're grateful for the hard work they put in trying to provide the best value for the dollar, but also the best benefit to, to our employees, so thank you for pointing those out. We'll move to public hearings, 8A, and I'll open the public hearings and ask our clerk to read 8A by title only.
Ordance number 2020-48, an ordinance annexing certain real property into the city of Orman Beach. Said property being generally located at 1644 North US Highway 1, along the west side of said highway, and being northwest of the Interstate 95 North US Highway 1 interchange, and being commonly known as the AA Accurate Truck and Tire Repair Property. Parcel ID number 3136-01-64-0010, including that portion of Oak Street right-of-way abutting the property to the south, setting forth zoning privileges... the property to the south, setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the properties, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city to include the properties, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the city of Orman Beach to include the properties, providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-48, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2020-48.
A second to motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we will close the public hearings and move to 9A.
Ordinance number 2020, oh, I'm sorry, lost my page. Ordinance number 2020-49, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 by amending the General Fund 001, Local Law Enforcement Trust Fund 109, Grants Fund 116, Financing Debt Services Fund 205, 2010 Beachfront Park Bond Fund 220, Capital Improvements Fund 301, Recreational Impact Fee Fund 310, Facilities Renewal and Replacement Fund 317, Renewal and Replacement Fund 409, and the General Liability Fund 504, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-49, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards, just need a motion and a second. I was gonna do it after I got the motion and a second, because then I could, I could forget that I had the motion and the second, and then Dwight could remind me.
I'll move ordinance 2020-49.
A second.
All right. Moved and seconded, and I'll ask, who wants to start? Kelly or Joyce? Kelly, just a brief, thank you.
Certainly. So each year, we come to you right after the end of the fiscal year, we ask you to amend the budget. These amendments are just like every year, they're largely capital project-related. Every one of them, you've approved individually. They were part of the fiscal year 1819 budget, but of course, capital projects don't get finished in one fiscal year, so we're simply asking you to reappropriate dollars. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Great. Any questions for Kelly? This is the time of year, these little adjustments usually come to us. I don't think it's anything out of the ordinary, and we've all reviewed, reviewed the agenda item. Joyce, did you have anything on top of that? All right. Any further discussion by the commission? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we move to discussion 10A, the city attorney evaluation, followed by 10B, city manager evaluation. I don't have any cards on these. We'll go with the city attorney first. Any discussion?
Just, thank you very much. As you all know, public service is a very humbling responsibility, and I think the, I thank you very much for the evaluations, but really, it's a reflection of the hard work of all the employees of the city. And I'm sure our city manager would agree with that. The city manager is just a gem to work with. I mean, I don't know what I would do if she wasn't here. I mean, she's just seamless, and I think the hard work of her staff is reflective of that as well. And as, as much as I appreciate the evaluations, I've gotta give due credit where it is, and it's really with the employees that support us. And it also starts with the cohesive direction that we get from the commission. This is a commission that is, has been consistently unified and not divisive, and that makes my job and the job of the city manager so much easier. It ensures that we're all reading off of the same page from the same script, and her responsibility and that of her staff is to implement the policies in the direction that this commission sets. My responsibility, that of my staff, is to make sure that every, you know, kind of define that legal box and make sure everybody operates within that. And it's just, I just can't say enough about the staff that works for this city. It's, I'm, I'm just, I'm just so pleased to be here, it's a pleasure, and this year's been especially challenging, and I hope that next year lightens up a little bit. And we'll just take it a day, a day at a time, is all we can do. Thank you very much.
That's it. Thank you, Randy. And we will take a motion and a second to accept the evaluations. That's really all we need to do tonight, and then after that, we can, any discussion that anyone wants to allow, but if somebody wants to make that motion-
Move approval to accept the evaluations, as presented.
Second.
All right. And who would like to start? Anybody? Commissioner Persis, yeah. Just talking about Randy.
Okay. Well, gosh, I just wanna say that, you know, Randy, you said you're, you know, you work for the people, and, and you work for the public, and that's kind of what I've done my whole career too, and so that kind of resonates in my heart. And I just wanna say, I know what you do with your, you put your heart in everything that you do, and you really care about what you're doing, it's very apparent. And I just wanna say too, that anytime I've ever asked you anything, I get an answer right away, you're so helpful, and, you know, there's not always, there's not, people aren't always like that, and you're always happy and smiling, and you just wanna help, and, and I really like that, 'cause I feel like, I'm that kind of person too, so I feel like I can kind of relate. So I just wanna thank you for all the years that you have given to the city of Orman Beach. I, I know people speak so highly of you in our whole county, and I just want you to know that. So you deserve all those wonderful things that everybody said about you, and I'm very proud of you.
Very nice. Commissioner Littleton?
Mr. Hayes, you and your team are the best in the business because of your collective experience, hard work, and integrity, and there's no one else that I would rather have protecting my back. So thank you for your service to this city and to this commission.
Awesome. Deputy Mayor Kent?
Thank you. So, Mr. Hayes, Randy, I'll just tell ya, you're not only caring and thoughtful and efficient and effective at what you do in the department you run, but you're tough and you're fair, and you do an excellent job representing all of the citizens of Orman Beach. And I've seen you get passionate about specific things, I've seen you and I not agree on things, and I've seen us agree on, on, on many things. But through all of it, your professionalism, your integrity never wavered. And this city is extremely fortunate to have you, your skill set, your leadership skills, and I already said tough, didn't I? 'Cause you are, 'cause you, 'cause you are, you are tough. You, you know, something that people, I don't know if they know about you, is that it's, it might be a little bit of a fault for your health, is that you take this stuff to heart. Like this is, this is your city, and, you know, I mean, growing up here your whole life, you've got skin in the game, and it's obvious. And I mean, come on, a 4.96 out of 5? I, I love it, because you're not perfect, you know, you gotta, you gotta work a little bit more to, to get that, to get that perfect score. But I'm, I'm super honored to work with you, be one of your five bosses, and, and watch you protect this city. Thanks.
Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hayes, Randy, the, you, you mentioned humility and being humble, and, and, and in your comments, you praised the people you work with and the staff, but the leadership that you provide, and the attitude that you bring to the job, is what really sets you apart, and what really makes you special, and that's why we are so incredibly fortunate to have you representing us. And I just, one, one specific example that I wanted to bring up that occurred to me was when the negotiations were underway with the Antares folks. You, you spotted immediately something that, that could have been potentially fiscally injurious to the city of Orman Beach, and you pushed for the payment in lieu of taxes, and, and that was, you were successful in getting that, and that's huge. Now, that project appears to be, you know, stalled at this point, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that at some point that will get built, and knowing that that's there is, is a big deal. And, you know, so it's not, in other words, you could have just done your job and not even, you know, not even made that an issue, you know, just walked it through, but you, you brought that up, and that's gonna, that will forever be important to the citizens of Orman Beach because of that. That's just one example of the kinds of things you do. So I have total confidence in your ability, and when you say something and you recommend it to us, or when you give us guidance, I don't, I don't question it. I know that it's good, good, solid advice, and that we can follow it, and we'll be on the right track. So for that, I thank you.
Good stuff, and I can comfortably echo all those comments. I'm gonna rely on my written comments for, for my official version, but a very, very positive review, so congratulations, Randy, and thank you. Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we move to 10B. I don't have any cards, just need a motion and a second, and we'll go through the same process with Joyce.
I move approval of the city manager's evaluation.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and who'd like to lead off?
I will.
City manager. Commissioner Persis?
Well, I just love meeting with you, Joyce. I love coming to your office and having our meeting. It's just, we're working, but we're having fun too. I always think that's important, to work hard and have fun, and I always have a lot of questions, and you are able to draw your diagrams and show me everything, and make it very clear to what you're saying. And I am too, so that's why I'm right on, and so I totally understand everything that you say. But you have helped me more than you know, and I just, I just want you to know how much that means to me. And then I'd take it further, that everybody in the city that I talk to, and I'm talking about not the city staff, but the whole city of Orman Beach, they all know who you are, and everyone has the highest regard and respect for you. I don't know if you realize in the community how, really how sincerely well-regarded you are, and you need to know that, and, and you've worked for that reputation very, very hard. And I like hard workers, I like tough women, and I'd like to say that I'm the same, and I, I wanna be like you even more. So I just wanna thank you for making Orman Beach just the most amazing city that it is, and it truly, truly is, and it really has a lot to do with you. So thank you.
Commissioner Littleton?
Sure, sure.
We'll go in the same order.
Ms. Shanahan, you truly are an asset to the city, and you've made my job here on the commission really easy to do, and I just thank you for your leadership, experience, and ethics throughout your entire, sort of reign over the city, and just thank you, and I hope you're here for a long time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor Kent?
Thank you. So Ms. Shanahan, Joyce, I, I switched my vote way back when to make sure you were our first choice. I think you probably remember that, that evening, and it's one of the better decisions I've made in my life. It's probably the best decision I've ever made for Orman Beach. So one of the best in my life, and the best I've probably made for Orman Beach, and yeah, I repeated that because it's, it's, it's pretty powerful, and I think it means something after 17 years of, of serving, you know, my constituents here. You are also kind and compassionate, and boy, oh, boy, a couple of times I've seen you get tough with your staff. You have high expectations, and my father always taught me, if you don't have high expectations for your own children, you'll never be disappointed. And you have high expectations for your staff, and they continue to meet those expectations. In addition to being kind and a hard worker, you're tenacious. You think outside of the box, and you're a people pleaser. You try to please everyone, and you're patient sometimes with individuals that call you with, I would say, serious concerns, but sometimes you listen to what they're saying, and, and it's nonsense, but you try to solve the problem. And it's, that's something that, that I appreciate. Now, unfortunately, I hate to bring up something negative at this point in time, but you only got a 4.95.
I'm still trying to beat Randy.
And Randy got a 4.96. So I think you owe Randy lunch, you know, when you guys go out and, and, and talk about, you know, city business, Randy, I think she's on the hook this time, because you're, you know, that, that one tenth of a percent, you know, higher, higher, or hundreds of a percent higher than, than Ms. Shanahan. This is a testament to what this commission thinks about you and the job that you do every day. You swing for the fences every single day. And I read everyone's comments, and I have to say, I agree with all of the comments, but there was one that jumped out at me, and I thought the mayor was spot-on with. One thing he wants to watch you start doing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, if I don't say it correctly, was take more vacation days. Is that what you said?
Something like that.
Something, something like that. Take more vacation days, but it's, it's a true testament of, of who you are and the dedication you have for this city and these residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Shanahan, we are very fortunate to have you as our city manager, and you, I remember a year or two ago, I think, the city of Naples, you were pretty close to going there, and you shared with me today that every single member of that city commission is no longer on the city commission. Isn't that interesting? Isn't that interesting? There, and there, and, and how awful that would have been to have been serving there with, if none of those people could stay, you know? But anyway.
Not pretend fools, so look after me.
Well, in this, well, that certainly isn't what happened in this case, 'cause you are not that. No, we are, we are so incredibly fortunate, the, the, what, what Commissioner Kent said is, is so true. You're compassionate, you're patient, you, there are many, many times when the, the requests and the frequency of requests from some people are, are, you know, beyond my limits of endurance, but you continue to hang in there and to, and to deal with those, and that, that's really important. And the, the, your character and the leadership that you provide, this is a, this is a big organization with a lot of departments, a lot of people reporting to you, and you lead them in an admirable way, and you lead them incredibly well, and as a result, the, the morale is exceedingly high throughout the city. I haven't heard any, any rumblings of dissatisfaction in any department, maybe it exists, I don't know, but, no, I don't think it does. And, and that's a reflection on you, because it starts at the top. So thank you very much for the service that you're providing us, and then ultimately the citizens of Orman Beach. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby, and great job again, Commission, recognizing city manager Shanahan. Again, I'm gonna rely on my written comments. Joyce does an amazing job, she's probably in the top five city managers in the nation. That Naples search was a nationwide search, and that's a city that looks for the absolute best when they go to hire, and Joyce was who they chose. Luckily, we were lucky that Joyce chose us instead, and it's not an easy job that she does. And there are, you know, Commissioner Selby, you pointed out, there are people who are extremely difficult to work with and probably don't deserve what they're asking for, and yet Joyce works so hard to try to satisfy them, just because she has a heart for public service, and I'm blown away by that continuously, and Orman Beach is, is lucky to have her. So her and Randy, I gave, I thought, exceptional reviews, 'cause they deserved it, and it sounds like everybody else did as well. So thank you both for your public service and your dedication and your examples to our staffs, and both of you have done such a great job with your own staffs. I think you should have the enjoyment of taking a week or two off, you know, having a decent vacation while your well-qualified staffs fill in for you, and my hope is that by doing that, you will not burn out. That's my real fear, 'cause we wanna keep you here as long as possible. So that's your, that's y'all's own personal decision, but that's just my wish for you, is that you get to enjoy some experiences in your life during your work, life, period- is that you get to enjoy some experiences in your life during your work-life period and that that will extend your time with us. So with that, unless anybody has anything else, I think we need to vote. Please call the vote, Colby.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes.
And Mayor, I had one other thing, actually.
Deputy Mayor.
Just for Joyce and Randy. I think we all probably wanna give it to you.
I think we said stand up.
Standing up.
Oh, standing up.
On our chairs now.
I know.
We're gonna burn out the chamber. Come on, let's do it. Rob, we're following your lead.
All right. Reports, suggestions, and requests, and Joyce, if you've recovered from that, we're gonna start with you.
Holy smokes. If I may take a point of personal privilege and tell you what an honor it is to work with Randy Hayes. He is a truly an exemplary attorney. He guides us in all the right ways. Sometimes we miss things and he's, he's like Colby, he reads every word of every document and has kept us out of trouble more times than we care to say. But he really does do an amazing job and he, he's built a wonderful department over there, very qualified legal staff, he's got them keyed to certain areas and it's really, it's a fine-oiled machine over there. And it's my privilege to work with a city attorney of his caliber. I have worked in communities where city managers and city attorneys don't get along and the business of the city doesn't get done when that happens. So thank you, Randy, for all of your service. Commission, thank you very much for your leadership. It's the direction, I feel like the choir director. You guys give me the music that you wanna sing and I work with the employees to get it done. I don't do any of this alone. Every single person that works for the city works hard every single day, from the guys reading the meters to the, the water and sewer crews that are called out late at night to the police officers who are helping individuals and the firefighters who are saving lives and the police officers as well. This doesn't happen by accident. They have great department directors, they love what they do and they make my job incredibly easy. So I am grateful for that. I'm also grateful for how responsive they are. We get requests every day, emails, we get some requests from the commission, from your constituents, and it doesn't matter who it is, we respond to everybody in the same manner. We respond respectfully, we help them when we can. We even go to the point of giving them the telephone number of the person at the county that they need to call. We don't just say you need to call the county. So they really go that extra mile. Everybody from our receptionists in Public Works and, and City Hall to Terry Hampshire who does an amazing job and certainly Claire who's really done an amazing job for our city. So I'm grateful to work for a community such as Orman Beach. You're a, you've made this a crown jewel of Florida. This is a, a community to be, to be desired, a community in which people want to live and, and a community in which the, the citizens participate not only in their government but helping the community. We have so many individuals that have given dollars to help with like the casemates project that's going on, Lucy Jackman with the Performing Arts, with so many other projects that we do, the community comes to bear. Dwight Durant has been integral in a lot of the recreation activities we've done at the sports complex, giving the design for free to build those buildings. So it really is a labor of love in this community and each of you plays the, the major role in making that happen. So I'm very, very grateful and thank you for the very positive review. So now on to my other comments, the real business of the city. So I wanted to tell you about two things that we're gonna be doing. We normally do a Veterans Day lunch, but due to COVID, we're gonna have that as a drive-through Veterans Day experience. Robert's laid out the plans for that and we'll solicit your assistance to hand out the, the box lunches. We typically do box lunches for that anyway, but we wanna still honor and respect those veterans. I don't have a date here just now, but I'll make sure that I send it to you. Let's see if I have that here. I can't draw anybody a picture, which I'm, I like to do. I, I just don't have that date here, so, but I will get it out to you. Thursday, November 19th is when we plan to do that. So we'll, we'll do a drive-by box lunch. We've already got that budgeted, so we'll move ahead with that. Our Hometown Heroes program, we're also gonna do a drive-through recognition for that. We, we toyed with the idea of having it outside at Rockefeller Gardens, but we just don't know how the weather would be and we would expect more than 200 people and I think that's probably hard to socially distance and, and some of our Hometown Hero folks might have trouble walking on the grass and things like that because it's not a real stable environment. So that's what our plan is right now unless things considerably improve. A couple of other things to update you on. Biketoberfest, you know, was busy. For some departments, it was quieter than others. The Fire Department reports that it was a little bit quieter this year. They responded to five Biketoberfest-related incidences and six incidences outside of Orman Beach area that were handled by Volusia County. The Police Department reports that it was a little bit busier for them than normal. They had 992 calls of service between the 15th and the 18th of October, 203 traffic stops, 76 citations, 129 warnings, 70 written reports, 24 crashes, no fatal crashes, which is good, seven misdemeanor arrests, six felony, and five Baker Act. So it was a little bit quieter than, than normal for Fire, but a little bit more active for Police. This past weekend, the Police Department held a recruiting event. We have currently six vacancies in our department and we've got six in the pipeline, two might wash out, but we've got some that can backfill that. But the chief went to the Daytona State College and invited the recruits to come out for a, a box lunch, a PowerPoint, and we had our motorcycle division there, we had our crime scene investigation van there, we had our special response team there and the truck was there. So they really got to see what, what's happening in Orman and what their opportunities are. They had the K-9 Kane, is that who was there? K-9 Kane was there. He's always very popular. So it was a great opportunity to showcase what we do in Orman. I had the opportunity to, to meet the folks that was, that were there. Wonderfully enough, there were four women that attended the recruitment seminar, so that, that's great. So we, the chief continues to find innovative ideas to attract individuals to our department. One thing he started doing about a year ago, I think, is, is it two years now? Providing a scholarship to someone that's at the academy. We go and he finds out who's the best in the class and offers them a scholarship. And we've had good results with those individuals. So we get the cream of the crop up first because we provide them a scholarship. We don't wait until they're all picked over at the end of the service, so at the end of the six, at the end of the training session. So he really has done an admirable job trying to find new recruits and it's a challenge, there's no doubt about it. The sheriff is standing up his own law enforcement academy in the fall, so we're concerned about that, but we're actively pursuing ways to attract and retain our individuals. And you know, right now is a really particularly difficult time for our police officers. Fortunately, our Orman Beach community really love our police officers, but there are some, some individuals that still don't like police and they're, it's a very hard job to do when you're trying to help people out and they don't wanna be helped. But our police are respectful, are always polite, they are courteous, and they do their job well. And I'm happy to report that we were re-accredited for another three years by the Florida Department of Law Enforcement Accreditation. That's a big deal. They have every policy that you can think of, from use of force to, you know, outside detail work or working a side job. Everything is, is written down and regulated and all those officers have to know those policies. It's a very thorough examination by the Law, the Florida Commission on Law Enforcement and Accreditation. They come for two solid days. This time it was all virtual, but they ask questions, they review every policy, they look at every issue that may have come up during our year to determine if we're worthy of re-accreditation. So Chief, congratulations on an amazing job at being re-accredited. It doesn't come easily and we worked hard to retain that accreditation. After five accreditation periods, you can become eligible for Excelsior status. So with our next evaluation that's due in two and a half years, usually it's three, but because of COVID, everything's wonky. We, if we got, if we were successful in being re-accredited at that time, we would be eligible for Excelsior status. That's outstanding status. So I'm sure the chief will work very hard to maintain that status. I can't say enough about both Police and Fire that they do an amazing job. Nothing else of note, except that we did get our, this past week FEMA closed and obligated to the city two projects for Category B. Category B is emergency preparation for Hurricane Dorian. So we received money for that and we also received money for the Andy Romano Beachfront Park ramp that was damaged there. So that'll be repaired. We're looking at some sort of more stable solution. I don't know what that is because that's been damaged in several hurricanes now, the handicapped access ramp. That was a total of $86,000 and I don't have any more updates on, on any of the, we've gotten most of our Matthew and Irma money. And then certainly last but not least, the Police Department, the Finance Department is starting their annual audit process. Kelly's staff does a stellar job and the auditors will be here through Christmas, early first part of the new year, and then the audit will be presented to the commission as it always is in the first meeting in February. And that's about it, unless you have any kind of questions for me.
Any questions?
And thank you for allowing me to serve our community and you.
Thank you, Joyce. Next is Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Good evening. I would be remiss if I didn't take advantage of the one day in the year that Joyce and Randy have to suffer through compliments. I just wanna add that there, there really isn't anyone that I'd rather work for, work with, and learn from. The dedication and the respect they show you is exactly what they show the staff every day. So it's truly a great place to work.
Wonderful. Thank you. And City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I can't top any of that. I, I do, I do want to circle back to the Team Volusia item that was discussed earlier. I just didn't, I didn't find an entry portal, but I just wanted to mention on the record that I had an opportunity to talk to Commissioner Selby at some length and from the city side, there's no conflict of interest either and I just wanted to get that on the record. So thank you.
Great, thank you. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start off by saying how much I, I wanna thank staff because I've been coming to Ms. Shanahan with some requests recently and it's so appropriate that we honored Public Works and Utilities and eventually our first responders too, but I'll get to them secondly. But whether, I've come to Ms. Shanahan with requests for traffic signals or clearing vegetation to, and several other things, and just the next day, they've been done and satisfactory and our citizens have noticed it too. And I wanna thank staff for that and Ms. Shanahan. Also, it, it just makes me so happy that we're honoring first responders and we'll have events Thursday, October 28th, and I'll definitely be there. And it, it really shows how much citizens of this community care about our first responders where in sometimes parts of the world, it's not the same, at least, and, but here in Orman Beach, they really do. And there's actually, there's so many nice things happening in Orman Beach right now. It's too long the list, but I'm so happy right now with the way things are going in the city. I, I love living here. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. The one thing that comes to mind tonight is the, for me, is the state of the city. I thought that was incredibly well-done. I, I think the, the fact that we were able to hold it in person and yet be socially distanced and be responsible, that was, I know there are a lot of people who are disappointed that they weren't able to get tickets because of the smaller, smaller capacity for the room that it was held in. But the video, if you haven't seen the video that we do, which, which by the way, I think is, is such a great way to do it because it's, it's brief, but it has all of the content. I think it's 12 minutes total. It's on YouTube, right, Jen? Yeah, yeah.
It's on the website.
On the website too, yeah, that's right. So anybody who hasn't seen it, it gives you a really good view of everything that's going on in the city. Economic development as well as other projects, city projects and so forth. And the fact that we're all, we all get to participate in that, I think is really great because, you know, the citizens get to see that also. So I just wanted to say, you know, that, that I just wanted to point that out, that I think that's a really great event. And I think we've been doing it now for 12 years, if I'm not mistaken. So that's great. Thank you. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor Kent.
Thank you. Ms. Shanahan, we've had some really crazy high tides lately and the break wall is, I think, doing its job, but I've been concerned every time I see the tide like inches away from the top of the break wall. And if the break wall's underwater, then it can't do its job effectively. So I just would like for our staff, our engineers, to look, get back with us if we need to spend CRA money, to have more of the Kokina boulders put out there to make it a few feet higher. I would be all for that. So that's been on my mind. I just wanted to make sure that, that I brought that up. And, you know, I just also wanna say that we are in the home stretch of election season and that's, that's always a, a good time. And you've heard me say that I love this stuff and, and I truly do. And Commissioner Selby's right, the state of the city was fantastic. And it wasn't always presented the way that it, that it is. And I know you know that because I used to, to see you at those when you were just Citizen Dwight Selby, you know? And there was, you know, the mayor spoke and, and that was it, you know? But it's, you're right, it's nice to have the entire commission involved and participating. So, you know, with, with us being in the home stretch of, of election season, let me just tell you, I'm, I'm a big boy and I have big shoulders. And I'm gonna use two words right now. Be kind. Be kind. It's not so difficult to do, but people were beating up this city because we held the state of the city address. And my wife wrote a beautiful postcard letter to the constituents of Zone 2. And unfortunately, she, she got her first piece of hate mail yesterday with, with that piece being sent back to her anonymously, but I don't think the person realized, you know, when we, when we put the mailers out, it says who it goes to and they didn't mark their name out when they sent it back with the disparaging comment, with the disparaging comment about my wife. And I say be kind. Our spouses, their names are not on the ballot. My minor son's name is not on the ballot. My adult stepchildren's names are not on the ballot. My mother and father and five brothers and sisters are not on the ballot. My friends are not on the ballot. And if you wanna say something mean and nasty because that's how your heart truly is, pick up the phone and call me. I'm a big boy. I'll listen to you. I'll take it. But my wife doesn't deserve it. My kids don't deserve it. Orman Beach, be kind. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and Commissioner Persis.
Well, good evening, everyone. I think all of you mentioned some things that I wanted to say already, but I, I too enjoyed the state of the city. I thought the video was, was amazing and the booklet that everyone got at their tables, which I, I see the mayor has over there, so I'm not gonna steal his thunder with that. But, but it was just well put together and I heard so many positive comments from those that were able to attend. And I know a lot of people did watch the video online and were very impressed with it. So another great activity from the city. It was just, it was... It was just, it was just fabulous. Um, also, I'm excited to attend First Responders Day. First responders are near and dear to my heart mainly because they serve citizens, and, and that's what I've done in my whole career, and, and so I really respect the time and effort and the dedication that you all put in. So it's wonderful we're having that, and I'm just really excited about it. And, um, I just want to tell everybody up here that I really care about you, and I wish you all the very best on Election Day, and I just hope that we're all sitting up here in another month. That's my wish for tonight, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Persis. The, uh, you guys have, and gals, have pretty much covered everything. The State of the City was a, a great one. If anybody didn't see the brochure, I do have one. You're welcome to it, or I can, uh, we can always get more if somebody, if somebody wants one. Dave Pizzo put a lot of these pictures in here, and he created the video basically, working with staff, of course, but he wanted to thank the commission for his ace award. He texted me the other day and just wanted to specifically thank each of you for that award. It meant a lot to him, and he does, for years, he's done so much for the city, and when you look at just these positive, uh, fantastic quality-of-life pictures, you can see how, uh, how much he cares about our city. The other great thing was the thank you on the back page for first responders and all those pictures of our men and women in action, which was awesome to see. So, uh, well done, as Commissioner Selby mentioned, socially distanced, very appropriate with the masks, and I noticed people were sitting in groups, uh, with people who they work with every day, so, uh, and those tables were well socially distanced as well. So, uh, it just, it worked. Next thing, I had a meeting with Lucy Jackman, who is working on the, uh, some renovations to the Performing Arts Center. I've asked, uh, our staff whether they can figure out a way that we can help her. She's truly passionate about the improvements there, and, uh, I don't know what can be done, you know, depending on where we're at in the budget season, but I think staff's going to maybe bring some stuff back to us, so I just wanted to let the commission know that. She may have had meetings with, with each of you as well, and, um, so I'm just, I'm impressed. She has, uh, so much energy and cares so deeply, and, uh, it's, I think she's a retired school principal is what she indicated, 80 years old and, uh, blown away by her passion, so, uh, the accreditation is phenomenal. Our chief and his staff and all our officers, men and women of the Ormond Beach Police Department, work so hard to make that accreditation happen. Not, I don't know if we appreciate it enough or if our residents realize what a big thing that is, because not every community is accredited, and there's, uh, probably hundreds in Florida that are not. And so to achieve that designation and hold yourself to those high standards, that, plus the fact we've had a Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Board for 25, 30 years, something like that, something that many cities are just in these last few months saying, gosh, we need, gosh, we really need a Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Board, that's so important. We've had it for, for years and years and years, and I think that's part of the problem that maybe we don't, or part of the reason we don't have the problems that other communities have, because we have that important citizen review and have had that, uh, year after year. So, uh, Joyce, my idea, I'll draw a diagram for you. For Andy Romano, it involves hinges and an adjustable, uh, it, of course, would have to be ADA accessible, and maybe Dwight Durant can help us engineer it, but, uh, make that, uh, stairway adjustable so that we can adjust with the tides and the shifting of the sands and something that will...
Stairways, right, it's just the ramp.
Right, that's what I meant, the ramp. So I think, uh...
Forward to your direction.
Okay, good deal. I know it's going to work. And with that, uh, thank you all for your time and attention tonight, and we will say good night. We're adjourned.